Good evening, everyone, to the Fitchburg Common Council Meeting for September 26, 2023. The first thing is to call to the order to this meeting, and please stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next is roll call, please, Tracy.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen.
Present.
Mayor Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Dearheart.
Here.
Alder Herbst.
Here.
Alder Jetzer.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Strassmann.
Here.
Alder Udell.
Here.
Alder Wheeler, looks like he is absent.
Absent with excuse, okay.
Thank you so much, you have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to public appearances for non-agenda items. What we have now is a presentation of the Bicycle Friendly Business Award that the city, you know, has been awarded by a gold bicycle friendly business. And we have tonight Steve Arnold, former mayor, and also representing Bike Fitchburg. So you want us to go there?
Yeah.
Okay. So what do we do?
(inaudible).
Okay.
And is there a microphone?
Oh, oh, he has it.
I see that our Directors of Public Works and Planning are on, are with us virtually, and if they were here, I would invite them up too, as key people in this award. This evening, well, first of all, I'm sorry we didn't have a bigger crowd for this, I was hoping for, to beat the Packers. But this evening, I'm representing, as you mentioned, Mayor, Bike Fitchburg, our local advocacy group, I'm treasurer, I'm Secretary of the Statewide Bike Fed, and I'm a Certified League Cycling Instructor for the League of American Bicyclists. They're the national advocacy group, and they are the ones that are giving you this award. It is a great pleasure, on behalf of the Bike League, to present Fitchburg's civic campus, the library, the senior and community centers, City Hall and the Police Department, this award as a gold bicycle-friendly business. Being a bicycle-friendly business, it means that you are encouraging employees and guests, of which there are thousands every week here, especially on Election Day, to ride their bicycles. And you do that by having showers, excellent parking, and perhaps a centerpiece of our recent efforts to become more bicycle-friendly, bike-share stations like this B-Cycle Art Bike that we brought in to demonstrate. I rode it up from the library, a few hundred feet away, where our first B-Cycle station is, and there will be more on the campus to serve all the visitors and employees for a quick trip over to the drugstore, or an official visit to the Well House, or whatever else we need for transportation. So, congratulations, and this award is good for four years, but I know that the city will not rest on its laurels, and will continue to work to become even more welcoming to bicyclists. So congratulations, Administrator and Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
And I will clear all my props out of here now. Thank you very much. Oh, let's have the photo up.
Okay.
Oh, you want me to say? So no, I want to say, the other thing I want to say is I thank you, Steve, for all your help and support, and Bike Fitchburg, it's great to have this organization here in Fitchburg, and it's doing the advocacy for bicycling and all the activity, and I think that, you know, I think that the city should continue investing in bicycle activity and infrastructure inside the service urban area, especially in parks in our community, you know, civic area, and parks, to create that connectivity. So, thank you very much. Thank you to the bikers in the group, you know, Bill, Joe, and Dave, you know, so, and I don't know.
Take care of this. Don't forget the future bikers.
The future bikers?
Gabriella, Chad, Julia, Jay, Shannon, Jim, Randy.
I've caught Jim on the bike path.
Who?
Jim.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Thanks, Steve.
Okay, so next, we move on with our consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anyone wants to pull out anything from here?
Yes, please.
Which one?
Item C3, Resolution R17723.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, so, so all of us in favor of the consent agenda without item 5C3, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. So next, Bill, what do you, what do you want to do with this resolution?
I would like to move that we also refer this resolution to the Bicycle Committee and the Transit and Transportation Commission, since this involves both bicycles and transportation.
Second.
All of us in favor of referring this resolution to TTC Bike Committees, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay, thank you. So next, we move to Administrator Report. So if I missed anything, that is you now.
Good evening, everyone. Several items for you to consider this evening. From a personnel standpoint, Nick Joseph has been hired as our new IT Director. He will begin his service to the city on October 16th. Actually, I should say he will re-enter service to the city on October 16th. Nick was employed in our IT Department for several years in the mid-2010s. Adam Sayer, as you know, was hired as our Deputy City Administrator. He began in the role on September 20th, and he will be attending our Committee of the Whole Meeting tomorrow evening to introduce himself. As Steve Arnold mentioned, B-Cycle has continued its implementation of Phase 2, with additional docks and bikes being added to the B-Cycle system in Fitchburg. And you may have noticed, the new location that Steve mentioned just a few minutes ago, outside the library at the corner of Lacy Road and Research Park, there will likely be at least one, if not potentially two, additional docks placed here on the city campus, as well as all of the additional phases, or, I'm sorry, locations as part of Phase 2, in the coming months here. The Planning Department is kicking off the two neighborhood plans that you recently approved contracts for. The first public meeting is likely to take place in October, and details on this meeting will be shared with Council once the date and other information has been finalized. The current phase of the Sign Road Reconstruction Project remains on schedule for completion at the end of October, and the Lacy Road Reconstruction Project remains on schedule for completion in mid-November. The Chamber will be hosting its next Fitchburg Focus Luncheon on October 3rd at the Hop House. They'll be celebrating their 25th anniversary as a Chamber of Commerce here in Fitchburg. In the next Chamber Business After Four event will be on October 11th at 4:00 PM at the Flight Wine and Bourbon Bar on Lacy Road in the Taravessa Neighborhood. And three Fire Department upcoming events, for your calendars, their annual awards and pinning ceremony will be held October 3rd at 6:30 PM at Fire Station Number 1 on Lacy Road. The annual Fire Truck Parade, Dane County Fire Truck Parade is October 8th at 1:00 PM on State Street in Madison. And finally, the annual Fire Department Open House has been scheduled for October 14th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Fire Station Number 1 on Lacy Road. Any questions?
I have a question about the B-Cycle. Now that it's getting darker, you know, you know, around 5, soon it's going to be 5, 6, you know, I mean, if people want to ride those bikes, do we have light in those stations? I don't know, I haven't paid attention to that, but do we have, especially the one that they are in the park, I think the library is light, but you know, I don't know, I want to ask.
You're talking like streetlights, or other lighting of the area?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can't say for certain that every site has lights, I assume that that was taken into consideration when locations were identified, but again, I can't say for certain on that one.
Okay, no, I am curious, because the one, I think, in McKiffan Park, I don't think there is any light around, you know what I mean, but, okay.
The one by the Trades Training Center, you know, I went by that, and you can see that at night, you know, that, there's not a streetlight there, but the surrounding lights.
No, to be sure for safety, and you know, people can see what happens. Okay. Gabriela.
Yeah, following up, is, are there, does the B-Cycle website or somewhere have a list of all the, of the locations in Fitchburg?
I know they have the existing locations that were out there in Phase 1, why don't I grab a list of that, as well as Phase 2, including a map, and I'll just share that with Council, so you have that information, and then we'll look to make sure that it's added to the city's website also somewhere.
Great.
Thank you. So next, we move to Commissions and Committee Reports, and we will start with Plan Commission. Gabriela.
All right. I'll start with the resolutions. I'm going to move to postpone Certified Survey Map CS 251823 to October 24th Council Meeting.
Okay, do you want to explain why we're postponing?
I believe this, this one is just not ready.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah.
All of us in favor of postponing this Certified Survey Map, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Next one. I'm going to move to postpone Certified Survey Map CS 248222 to the November 28th Council Meeting.
Second.
Do you want to explain why? I don't know, Deanna?
Yeah, I believe we're, it needs more time. It was postponed in Plan Commission as well.
Okay. Deanna, do you want to add anything else, or?
No, this is one that has been on hold for a little while now, and the applicants are still working out some easements, it's actually for the Avalon, they're under construction. They do have to have the CSM approved and recorded prior to Certificate of Occupancy, it's just taken a little bit longer for the easements to get sorted out, so.
Okay, thank you. All of us in favor of postponing, what?
There was some verbiage in the Agenda Packet, saying that this is going to return to Plan Commission on November 21st, and be brought back in front of Council on November 28.
28. Yeah.
Oh, I thought you said October, I'm sorry.
The previous one was for October, this one's for November, November 28.
Never mind.
Okay. All of us in favor of postponing this CSM, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. So next, we move to the next one, Gabriela.
I move to approve Ordinance 2023-017, request by Tony Prestagiojomo, Agent for Prestagiojomo Joint Trust, to rezone property from RHA pre-1984 R4 zoning to BG, General Business, to allow for commercial uses on property associated with 5130 East Verona Road, as amended by Plan Commission.
Second.
Okay, can you explain this, Gabriela, or?
Yeah, so this one, it's a small, it's right off of Verona Road, like by the Williamsburg Way, by that roundabout, it's this little strip mall area, and one piece of it is zoned, it's technically an outlot, and it was, it was zoned this way right at the beginning of the, of the city, but it had been used as a restaurant, the owners are, it has not been in use as a restaurant for many years, but the, the owners are hoping to turn it into a different business use, right now it's vacant, but in order to do that, they actually have to change the zoning, because the zoning is currently residential, so we're just changing that, this is not a normal thing, we wouldn't normally zone an outlot as something, but it's just something we're going to continue doing, because this was done at the beginning of the year, and we want the property owner to be able to use that lot, and to rent it out, because it's currently vacant.
Do you want to add anything else, Deanna?
No, that's just fine, I'm just here for questions.
Am I, am I looking at that wrong? It looks like the old Picasso Restaurant building there.
Yes, yes.
That was, that was, that was residential?
Yeah, it's a real strange artifact of, I think, the beginning of our, of our zoning as a city.
It's pre-84, isn't it, zoning, yeah?
Yeah.
Funny, it had a, you know, it had a business in there before.
Yeah.
All right.
That's why I think we're letting it continue as a business, because it's, it's already been used that way previously.
Going around, live there, it's too noisy, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay, all of us in favor of Ordinance 2023-0-17, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the ordinance carries. Okay, so next, we move to the next one, Gabriela.
I move to postpone Ordinance 2023-018 to the November 14th Council Meeting.
Second.
And this is because we are aligning it with a couple other actions on the Hartung Fields, and there's a couple things that will be called, coming back on that November 14th Council Meeting.
Okay.
It was approved by Plan Commission, so, just for reference.
This just keeps getting postponed.
Any questions? David.
Is this, is this the one that Mr. Hayth wanted us to delay also? Wasn't satisfied with the stormwater?
I believe that is the development, yes.
Okay, thank you, Chad.
Okay, all of us in favor of Ordinance 2023-0-18, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay. So next, we move to Public Works.
Oh, I have a couple more things from Plan, before I move on.
Okay, sorry.
A few things, we approved a conditional use permit for Seminal Tap, which is going to be the new business that's locating where Funk's Pub used to be, and they got, you know, conditional use to hold events there, so they're planning to do some small events on a regular basis. I don't believe they're open yet, but they'll be open soon, I believe. And then, next, we approved a final plat request for the seventh addition to Nine Springs, and I did want to note this, because it was approved, and it's a smart zone property, so the staff will continue working on it, but there is planned construction in 2024, so there's some new things coming in the Nine Springs area. Number three, we approved a architectural design review for the Kamika Expansion, Kamika's on the Nobelt Drive, and they've always planned to expand the facility, but we're just kind of approving it to actually get that started. Really, really fascinating company that were, it's a pretty cool, they make atom probes, one of the only places, places in the world, I think the only place in the world that we make atom probes is right here in Fitchburg, so. And then, another thing, Fitchburg, a class at UW took on Fitchburg's comp plan for, for a class this summer, it was to look at our comp plan through the lens of the, of Sustainable Development, through the UN Sustainable Development Goals, and they created a report, and there was a nice presentation as well, so it's pretty interesting, they had recommendations about transportation, housing, and land use, and also gave some model cities that kind of were analogous to us, they suggested some things that we could potentially pursue, so it was a pretty fascinating thing that we were chosen for, and kind of cool to get an extra perspective on the city. Also, we had an application submitted to the UW Capstone, which is a UW program, an undergrad will do a two semester analysis of something. Our proposal was accepted, and so we have a student that just started, that's going to focus on the Nine Springs Uptown area, and so that's just underway, obviously a two semester project, but the Plan Department will report back on that soon. And the last item is, I'm also now the Transportation Transit Committee Rep from Plan Commission, so I'll be sitting in on those meetings with Bill, and that's all, thanks.
Congratulations. Okay, thank you, Gabriela, and next, we move to the Board of Public Works.
Madam Mayor, we have two members from the public here, were you here for an agenda item?
Yes.
All right, you're on top of it?
Yes, number 10.
So I'll make sure they didn't miss it, okay, thank you. All right, then, I'll move approval Resolution R15623, accepting a public pedestrian bike path easement on Lot 53 of the Chapel Valley Plat.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Plan Commission?
Yes.
Approved.
What is this, Dave?
So the, the bike path was, was laid out, and the developer, they ended up putting it, some of it was on their, their property, so we gave them the option, they could either move it, move it off their property, or give us an easement for the, for the path where it is, and so they agreed to give us a easement, and that's what we are, are getting here for the bike path.
Any question, comment? All of us in favor of Resolution R-156-23, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the resolution carries. Next one.
Next, I move approval Resolution R16023, approving First Amendment to Agreement for Subdivision Improvements in USONA Certified Survey Map, this was postponed from September 12th.
Second.
Public Works approved this.
Plan Commission?
Plan did not approve, and I will explain that when we get to it.
Okay, so who wants to explain this?
I'll, I'll let, Public Works approved, so I'm not sure why.
We can ask why Plan.
Yeah, so I'm asking why, why Planning didn't. I think I know, but, go ahead.
Okay, Gabriela.
Yeah, so this is something that I guess we, we looked, or it was on the agenda for last time, but it's an updated contract, this is the subdivision improvements that are required in order for USONA, which is that nonprofit that's owned by Promega, in order to move in, and the improvements are a bike path, walking path, in three phases, and the first phase, I believe, is complete, and I think the resolution was referred out to accept that completed portion, but phases 2 and 3, but primarily Phase 3, is actually through a very, very densely wooded area, and through a long conversation on Plan Commission, we just thought that we should consider not requiring that, a bike path through that specific area, given the fact that there's a bike path on the opposite side, and the fact that it's just such a valuable place of wooded property, it seems like it wasn't needed, even though by ordinance, we did require that, so we declined it because we didn't have enough information about it, but now that, knowing more about the information, that Phase 1 is complete, Phase 2, I think, has to be completed within a year, and Phase 3 has to be completed within the next four years, so there's plenty of time for staff to look into whether or not we can, we can find a way, find a different solution for that, so knowing all of that information, the Plan Commission very much would, I believe, would recommend approving this, this amendment.
And also, we need to approve tonight, because we need to have the occupancy by mid-October, isn't it? Otherwise, we, if we don't approve this, they cannot start accepting patients, or.
Gabriela, this is just the First Amendment, isn't it? What you're discussing are phases that will come, come before us, or am I misinterpreting?
My understanding is that this lays out the three phases and the timeline for the phases, so, and part of the miscommunication plan was we didn't have a BPW rep there to explain the nuances of this, so that's, that's really why.
Tim, Tim, can you weigh in?
I can cover, at least initially, but if Tim wants to weigh in, no worries, no worries.
I'm sorry, Chad.
So as the SI is currently written, it's not a phased approach, so it would require all public improvements, AKA sidewalks and/or bike paths, to be installed all the way along the property line, which would impact this area that Plan Commission had commented on, and unless we do an amendment, it would require them to actually install all of those public improvements now, before they can get occupancy, you know, would not allow further time to assess the impacts that sidewalks may have in that particular area, so that's why it's ultimately being phased, is to allow some additional time to take a look at this, and the amendment here would accomplish the phasing process.
Okay, I understand. What I looked at, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, we looked at along Glacier, Glacier Valley, from where that was to where it gets, let's see, you know, Fish House.
Yeah, Gunflint Trail.
Gunflint, sorry, along Gunflint Trail.
Gunflint Trail until.
Until it hits Glacier Valley, right. And I'm sure, where are the, are the trees right along Gunflint Trail there?
They are.
Okay, all right.
And, and there's a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, and so the question was, and I think we also discussed this in, in our Public Works meeting, do we need the sidewalk on both sides of the street, especially given that, once you get to Glacier Valley, there's nothing there for you, you know, there's no destination, and so I think that was the same thing that, that Plan was discussing, and in our BPW meeting, we kind of came to the conclusion that the requirement for this kind of predated everybody in the room, and so some research was going to need to be done to figure out, you know, what, you know, is this just following established ordinances, or was there anything exceptional going on when this requirement was put in?
I'll just say, thank you, thank you for identifying that, I had, I had not done that, and I won't want to cut down a lot of trees to put that in, all right, thank you.
So, yeah, so the idea is that staff is going to look at this, we have only, what, three more years?
Four.
Four, so to determine if we can, you know, apply, you know, the subdivision requirements that they are written right now, so. Okay, any other comment? No? So, all of us in favor of approving Resolution R-160-23, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the resolution carries, so thank you, so next, we move to the next one.
Move approval Resolution R17123, accepting subdivision improvements in the Chapel Valley Plat, Lot 54.
Second.
And Public Works did approve this.
Okay, thank you.
Standard, standard subdivision, and when we, the last time, we asked that, I think Tim is on, if there were still some punch list items, and since this is on the agenda, Tim, I believe those have been taken care of?
Yes, they have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all of us in favor of Resolution R-171-23, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, the resolution carries. So next, we move to.
Next, I'll move approval Resolution R17223, approving change order with AE2S for the Contract for Feasibility Study and Conceptual Design, Concept Design to Mitigate Flooding North of Dunn's Marsh.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Did Finance Committee approve?
Yes, the Finance Committee approved.
Thank you, so what is this?
So this is, you know, this is a process here, first, there's a study, which was, which was done, then we identify conceptual, conceptual solutions is where we're at, and we're hiring them to, construction specs, or, Tim, why don't, why don't you jump in here? This, it's a step process, and this, this was, this was planned.
So AE2S has come up with a conceptual design for the project, and this change order is for them to complete the bidding documents and the final design for the concept design that they came up with. So the contract amount will be increased by $98,500 for them to complete this work, we have $32,700 available in the project budget, the remaining $65,800 would be reallocated from the Curry Court Flooding Project, and allocated to the Flooding North of Dunn's Marsh Project, and then this budget amendment just requires a simple majority vote.
Any questions? Jay?
Just one, have we given up on the Curry Court flooding issue?
No.
We have not, so feasibility study was also done for that project, three alternatives were evaluated, and, you know, basically the feasibility, the results, the, didn't come back in our favor, so we need to investigate that a little bit more, so it's not dead yet, just more evaluation needs to be done to come up with a feasible alternative project.
Jay, we, you know, when we looked at those, none of them really gave us a good, good result, you know, to spend the money, you know, we just not enough bank for the buck, and it's flat there, and we, I'm not sure where we'll get, but we are not giving up on it, I guess.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to be on the record that we're still working on it.
Randy?
I think the biggest concern was from the residents in the, the special assessment, and that was their concern. There is one option, and I think it's Indian Trail, there, there is some city-owned property that dredged years ago, and a majority of the residents in that area would like to see that. would like to see that particular area dredged again, to capture a lot of that runoff. And it sounds like, based on some of the conversations I've had with them, they'd be very happy if that part of the project moved forward, to mitigate some of that stormwater issue.
Any other questions? Okay, so, all those in favor of resolution R-172-23, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to add, you know, we had an update from Tim last time, you know, we're still, we have two open positions, we're still trying to fill, the utilities, engineer, and environmental technician, we are interviewing, we have not filled these yet, but we're hopeful, you know, we have our fingers crossed, we'll have those filled soon.
Okay, thank you. So, next, we move to Park Commission, then.
No, no updates since last meeting.
Thank you. Library Board. Okay, so, Jim is not here, so, can you take this, Randy?
No, actually, is Misty not on?
It's the Finance Committee, I don't know.
We did approve it.
I can cover it if you want.
Sure.
Sure, I just ultimately will need a motion from somebody. I'll move approval of resolution R-173-23, requesting exemption from the County Library Tax.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second.
Finance did approve, though.
Okay, thank you.
And this is the annual resolution that exempts the City of Pittsburgh from the Dane County Library Tax. Because we provide library service out of our general fund to our city residents, we do not need to pay the county to provide these services. So, we need to pass this resolution in order to be exempt, or to request the exemption from the county tax.
Dave?
Chad, we have to do this every year?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? Okay. All those in favor of resolution R-173-23, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. So, next we move to the Commission on Aging Well.
We haven't done a lot since our last meeting, but we did open the patio, which was attended, there were about, probably 60 people or so there. So, it's already been getting some good use, and hopefully, we'll see a lot of activity out there.
Okay, thank you. RCC?
We have not met yet, but I did just want to put a plug in to fill out the Sustainability Survey, if you haven't, and encourage others to do so. Thanks.
Do you want to mention about the recycler there?
Yeah, we did have a recycler, but I don't have the numbers yet. The recycler did occur, but when we have those, we'll share them.
Okay, thank you. TTC?
Yes. Ross Kahler has drafted an RFP for the Transit Study in Resolution R-20522. And I had previously mentioned this at an earlier council meeting this year. This is a study to see about transit shuttle to the Civic Campus, bus route extensions to the Civic Campus, and additional parking rides. And, there was a question about funding. That funding was actually obtained in 2022, so that's been rolling over since then.
Did you guys talk about a, I heard that there was a WISDOT grant potentially, they could do like a matching grant. Had you, was there any discussion about that?
That's a good question.
I can send the info, I, this is from a long, long time ago, we've been talking, we talked about this last year, so.
And this was, this is not a TAP grant, this is something different?
I think it's something different, maybe, though, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I can forward it to Ross, maybe.
Okay.
Okay, what else? Anything else in TTC?
Yes, so, we are also going to be studying Vision Zero, as it could pertain to the City of Pittsburgh, and you should expect a short, like, five-minute presentation on that at our October 10 council meeting.
Okay, thank you. SIDA?
We have not met, so nothing to report.
Okay. Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee?
Yes, we met last week, and there was discussion regarding the well replacement, existing wells. And I think, if it wasn't the last council meeting, the council meeting before, one of those two, we had that conversation somewhat. But, Mark Jones brought it forward, and staff has it right now, working on some language issues, or, language issues, and it'll be brought forth probably within the next, I can't say the next council meeting, but in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Bicycle Committee?
I wasn't there, but there was Pick Me Up at the Border event, Bill went, there were 36 people that came in the rain, was there until the event started. The next Bike Committee meeting is at 7:30 a.m. on October 3rd, which is a Tuesday.
Okay, next week. EMS, okay, Jim is not here. Healthy Neighborhood Committee?
We have not met since our last council meeting.
Okay, Housing Advisory Committee?
No update.
Landmarks Preservation Commission?
We have not met.
Tree Advisory Committee?
No report.
And next we move to the Police Facility Oversight Committee. Do we have anything to, Jim is not here, so I don't know.
Jim is not here, but we could mention that there is a field trip for some members of the Ad-Hoc Committee, Police and Fire Commission, and elected officials this Saturday to tour a couple of recently completed police facilities in the Chicago suburban area.
Thank you. Everyone is invited, but you need to, Chief Morales is organizing that trip, so please contact him. So, next we move to the Standing Committees Report. So, we are going to start with Finance. So, Randy?
Okay, very good. Motion to approve resolution R-179-23, Data Server Storage Replacement Project.
Second.
And the Finance Committee approved.
Okay, what is this, Randy?
We had Rob on earlier.
Oh, Rob is here, okay.
Is he still there?
Yeah. Hi, everybody. This is Rob Kondansky, I am our interim IT Director at the moment. This, this resolution is for integral piece of our infrastructure. It houses our virtual servers and our storage for those servers. This is a part of a six-year replacement cycle that we started three years ago, where we're going to be purchasing this equipment in theory every three years, and we will be cycling the new equipment into our live production environment. So, we'll be constantly using the newest and best for the environment that we're using day-to-day, every day. And then, the unit three years ago, will transition over to our disaster recovery site, and it will use up the rest of its serviceable life, being as our disaster recovery plan to move to if we were to get into that situation. This was a plan put in place in 2019, to try to make sure that we stay on up-to-date equipment that's in as good a shape as we can have it. And, to this point, this is our first three years on this equipment, and it has worked out pretty much exactly as we had hoped when we went this direction in 2019.
Question for Rob, or Dave, and then Jay?
Okay. Rob, is our disaster recovery, are those servers, are they on-site, or is that off-site?
Currently, the live environment is actually off-site. That was done intentionally, it's in a very secure location. Our disaster recovery is on city grounds, and for security purposes, we'll probably leave it at that, but they are on city grounds.
Jay?
That was the same question that I had.
And Bill?
Yeah, so, presumably then, next time we purchase something, we're going to have the old DR site, equipment is going to be, what, disposed of, or scrubbed and sold?
Six years is thought to be the serviceable life of the equipment. At that time, if it's still operational, it's conceivable we could try to find another use for it, but that is the idea. Every three years, we'll do this process of new comes in, goes into the live, the one that was the live goes to disaster, and then we'll likely decommission, but if there is some sort of use that we could get out of that equipment, we'll consider that when we get to that point.
Any other comments, question? No? Okay. Thank you, Rob. All those in favor of resolution R-179-23, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the motion carries. Thank you. So, next we move to Personal Committee. Gabriela?
No report.
Public Safety and Human Services?
I'll move approval of resolution R-175-23, amending 2023 Grant Donation Fund Budget, PD Bounce Back Grant Funds.
Second.
Public Safety and Human Services approved.
Thank you. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee approved.
Okay, thank you. What is this? Oh, do we have?
We'll let Matt talk on this, please.
Thank you. So, this will probably be one of the final times that we come here for the Safer Communities Initiative. It does expire at the end of this year. But, this particular budget amendment is for $10,500 to offset Human Resources Department's costs of Police Department employee candidates going through psychological, medical, and drug screening conditions. Right now, HR budgets approximately $10,500 each year for the Police Department, and we've already exhausted that earlier this summer. So, we're looking to utilize the grant funding to assist with those costs. In addition, $3,500 for Class A/Under Guard Style uniforms for command staff, to be used during Police Department events, law enforcement funerals, badge pinning, promotional ceremonies, et cetera. So, entertain any questions?
Any question? We need two-thirds of vote, because it's a budget amendment. No? No question? Okay. So, I'm going to ask Rob's call, because this is a two-thirds, and I like to do Rob's call when they are two-thirds, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Allen?
Aye.
Alder Gerhard?
Aye.
Alder Hurd?
Aye.
Alder Jutser?
Aye.
Alder Maldonado?
Aye.
Alder Strassman?
Aye.
Alder Udell?
Aye.
Alder Wheeler is absent with excuse. Motion carries.
Okay, thank you. So, thank you. So, next, we move to unfinished business, we don't have anything. And then, we move to number 10, new business. And the first thing that we have, an action on claim for Joanne Marshall, and I have here Joanne Marshall with us, she wishes to speak and answer questions. So, Joanne, can you come to the microphone? You have three minutes to present your case.
Can I hand these pictures to you?
So, these are some photos?
Yeah, these are the photos of my wound, my leg, and I thought we, everybody.
We have a similar cavity, it's working its way from that direction.
Can you, yeah, you wish to speak, you can tell us why you're here.
Okay. All right. The pictures are from the Rotary Gardens that are surrounding the little lending library that our Rotary Club has, and that is right next to Kids Crossing at McGee Farms Park. And, and so, as a Rotary Club member, I was going to work in the garden, and I stepped up into the garden, and I tripped on the broken board that was there. And, some of you are viewing, there's a pointed part of the railroad tie that was sticking out, and as I fell, I fell into it, and as I fell, it just kept on gouging me around, and that's why the wound looks like a horseshoe. And, the doctor who stitched me up said it needed nine double stitches, and I could say that I had 18. So, a little bit more dramatic about that. But, it wasn't a laughing matter, because it bled a lot, and it hurt, and it kept me from doing a lot of things that I would have done during the summer. And, that is why I'm asking for compensation for quality of life that is lacking. And, I also wanted to say that, you know, we saw the board deteriorating, because we've been working in the gardens maybe about three years, and I think everybody thought somebody else would say something. And, unfortunate as it is that this happened to me, I'm glad that it happened to me and not one of the children, because that would have been just very tragic. And the children, I do what children do, they try to walk along those railroad ties. And, before it was fixed, there were spikes sticking out where the railroad ties were spiked into the ground, and it was quite a dangerous situation. And, so, after it happened to me, it was then immediately fixed. So, if you go out there and check the little gardens, which are beautiful right now, and the little library, you'll see that it's, you'll see that part that's fixed there. So, I just wanted to share that with all of you.
So, thank you for coming in this evening, and I'm sorry that you were injured that day. From the council perspective, you will see some information on the claim in the packet, and I will share the information that was provided to us by our city's insurance company, CivMx, Cities and Villages Mutual Insurance. They assessed this claim, and I'll paraphrase what they had included in their response back. And, that indicated that under Wisconsin law, municipality does not face liability unless there is a known danger that is compelling enough to warrant specific non-discretionary action by the municipality. And, courts have developed a three-step test to determine whether the known and compelling danger exception applies in a given case. One, whether something happened to create the compelling danger. Two, whether a government actor found out about the danger, making it a known and compelling danger. And, three, whether the government actor addressed the danger by taking one or more precautionary measures, or instead did nothing and let the danger continue. Based upon the information that was received from the insurance company, it is their understanding that the city does take corrective action to address defects on city property when they are made aware of known problems. I have also been advised, I'm sorry, the insurance agent has also been advised that the city had no prior notice of any dangerous condition in this particular area. Based on this, it is the opinion that the city is meeting the standard of reasonable care, which is the standard that municipalities are held to. And it is the opinion of the insurance company that the city is immune from liability under State Statute 893.80, which provides immunity for discretionary actions by municipalities. And further, it is their opinion that when and how often a municipality inspects and maintains their park grounds is a discretionary decision, for which the city would have immunity based upon the above statute. Based on all the above information that was provided to the insurance company that they evaluated, it is their recommendation that the claim be denied for the reasons cited above. If the council wishes to discuss this any further, you will note that it has not been agended as a closed session, so we would need to move into a closed session at our next meeting if there was any sort of discussion that was preferred on this particular matter.
Could I say something else?
Sure.
Okay. It just seems to me as though someone in the city or the Park and Recs Commission should have been checking all of this all along. And so, you can see from the photos of the boards that they are completely rotted away. And, you would think that someone other than me would have checked on it to make sure. And you would think that someone other than me would have checked on it to make sure everything is safe. And I did mention to the head of the Parks and Rec Commission that maybe it would be a good idea to check on things and make sure that there aren't any other things that are happening. And my husband and I just double-checked on something tonight, and there's boards missing on the fence along that wall that no one has checked on. And the first time I saw that something was wrong, someone had ripped the boards off, and the nails were sticking up. And so I turned them around and put them down, and I guess, you know, I should have said something, but I thought, well, I'll just wait and see if somebody else sees it. And they still are not fixed. The boards are gone, but the fence is not fixed. And so, you know, the insurance company, I don't know if they came out or they looked at other parks or anything, but I, you know, I'm not trying to undo what the insurance company said, but as a citizen, a concerned citizen, a mother, a grandmother, I think that somehow the city should step up on this and make sure that the parks at least are safe for our children.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
And thank you for working on the garden, you know? It's beautiful. I have been working the park, and I never said, who is doing that? But now I know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's a lot for you to say that and give us a compliment. Thank you.
Okay, so next, we are moving to action number 10C.
You actually need to act on this.
Oh, 10B. Oh, oh, sorry. So I need a motion to deny, please.
I'll move to deny.
Second.
All those in favor of denying the claim, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The claim is denied. Thank you. So next, we move to 10B, is consideration of settlement offer from Hy-Vee. And I need, we are going to go to a closed session for this. So I will ask anyone, I don't know, Gabriela?
I will move to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the government body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved.
Second.
Okay, so we need to ask people to leave the chambers.
All those in favor?
Oh, all those in favor of the closed session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we move to closed session. Un momento, por favor. Por favor. Okay. So I need a motion to reconvene to open session. All those in favor to reconvene to open session, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Opposed, the motion carries. So next...
Madam Mayor, I would move to deny the settlement offer from Hy-Vee Incorporated regarding the excessive tax assessment lawsuit.
Second by Joe. All those in favor to deny the settlement offer from Hy-Vee, say aye.
I would request a roll call vote, please.
Okay, so we'll request a roll call, please.
Uh-oh, we can't hear her.
All right, well, thank you. Alder Allen.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jethser.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Strassman.
Aye.
Alder Udell.
Aye.
Alder Wheeler is absent. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. So next, we move to Mayor's Report, isn't it? Okay, because I have this, okay. So a couple of things that I want to share with you. The most important is that the budget is out, and I want to, you know, it's my first budget as a mayor, so I want to thank, you know, Misty and her team and Chad for helping me navigate my first budget. We have been working in this budget for at least for the last two months, maybe. So I'm going to present my, I'm going to do a presentation of the budget in October 3rd, so I invite you to attend that Finance Committee meeting on October 3rd. I'm going to present to you my priorities. You read everything that's in the letter. I've seen, I, you know, I am bringing a lot of good stuff, new benefit from the staff to improve retention and to attract the best. And then I, so I want to mention all of that in my report next week. You can read my letter, everything is there. Also, I attended a couple of events, as, you know, the Fitchford Senior Center celebrated the Senior Week, and they have a, what was it, a celebration on September 15th. It was great. A lot of people show up. Also, we, the City of Fitchford, attended the Viva Mexico Festival last weekend, last Sunday, and I want to thank PD, the Police Department, and the Fire Department because they participated in the caravan and the celebration. And also want to thank Fact TV and Lisa because they participate in this event too, representing the city. We also attended with Chad, we went last week to the Leopold School here, it's in Madison, you know, but it's in Fitchford. It's kind of weird. So the idea was to introduce ourselves to the new principal, and then to, you know, we really want a strong Leopold School in our community, and we want to see what they are doing, how we can partner with them. And then, so that visit was also, we didn't know, but then they were waiting for us, the interim superintendent was there too, waiting for us, and the deputy, and, you know, it was, it was very, we did a tour, and it was very nice to come back. My children attended that school, so, you know, we have a special place in my heart, this school, so. And then, we, Joe and myself and Joyce, we attended the Pathway to Equity and Housing Fair event, and it was organized by the Youth Professional for the Urban League, talk about equity and housing. So it was a great event. I had the opportunity to meet with some of the people of Madison and the Economic Development Team and all the things that they are doing in housing. And then, we also attended the Dane County City and Village Association Meeting last week in Guanacay, with Chad, and what else? And I, this coming Saturday, I am planning to do the tour with the Police Department to take a look at some new police station in Illinois, so we have an idea how we can understand how, which are the components of a police station, because, you know, some of us, we don't have a clue what are those components, and it's going to make us, you know, have a better idea when we're going through our, the design to our own police stations, so. That's it for me, and I want to thank you also for the recycle event. I want to thank you, Brandy, you were there, the RCC, and Phil Groupie for, you know, putting together that event. So that's it for me. Any question? Okay, so we are going to move to the District Report, and, you know, you can tell me, I want to ask you one, a small question too. What do you do this week for your, you know, for your district? You know, if you have something, okay? Or what is happening in your district? Okay? So I'm going to start from two.
One thing, some of the Chapel Valley residents have been asking about, there's several senior facilities on that street, and there's a blind curb, it was a crosswalk to McGee Farms Park, and there's been a lot of discussion about whether we can limit parking on that curb, because currently people can park on either side. So we're going to reopen that conversation now that the, that facility, the assisted living facility is almost complete. It's a good time to make any changes, so that's in staff hands right now, but we'll see if we can maybe get an answer on that in the near future. But that's one of the things that's happening in the district, and I don't, I don't think I have anything else to report.
Bein?
I didn't realize there was going to be homework.
Good enough.
Yeah, well, I actually have not really done much of anything in the last week for my district. I've been a poor alder. The only update I have is really echoing, you know, I'll be attending the police facility tour this coming Saturday, and I also, as Joe mentioned earlier, took part in the Pick Me Up at the Border Ride.
Oh, yeah.
One thing I did want to, and I gave Ross Kahler a shout-out, I don't know who's responsible for this, but historically, every sidewalk ramp that leads down into the street has a bit of concavity in the curb there, and after a rain, water settles there and only there, where people are walking from one side of the street to the other. And the new curb ramps, or the sidewalk ramps that they put in at the corner of Charleston and Cheryl, as well as the ones that they're putting in along, oh, is that, is that already Chapel Valley there before the bend by the memory care facility?
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we shy around Chapel Valley, yeah.
Yeah, they are much improved, and they're very smooth, so you don't get that sharp jolt when you walk or roll down, and I don't believe that water is going to collect there, so I call that as a win.
Okay. District one.
A couple things. So on the 20th, a group called the Allied Food Collaborative met. There was a group called the Allied Food Collaborative that met. It's a group of folks in the allied community that, you know, have an interest in ensuring food security. They have like eight pages of notes that I just kind of skimmed through, and I think the overall theme of it is that there is a pretty transient neighborhood. There's a lot of people who stay there for a long time, but there's also a lot of people that come and go, and just being able to have access to all the different sites there are, whether it be food pantries, groceries, other services, meals programs, would be useful. So there's a long list of action items, so I think it just kind of speaks to the giving nature of the allied community, so I'm glad that these things are happening. I was not in attendance. There was also the Allied Dunsmarch Dinner last Friday evening that was well-attended. I stopped in at the beginning. I'll just say this publicly because people may have suggestions if they are watching this, but Representative Anderson has made a call for a public First Responder of the Year Award. So I just ask folks if they know of any of our first responders that would be worthy of this, to please contact me or get directly in contact with Representative Anderson, Jimmy Anderson, because they have had no nominations as of this week, so. And I'm sure there's a lot of great staff at our city that would be deserving of this award.
Joe, can I give you an update?
Yeah.
I received that Chief Morales is working on that.
He is, okay.
Okay.
Excellent. And then, there is a listening session, even though it's not in Pittsburgh, it is from Senator Agard. It's October 6th at 12:30 at Salvatore's Tomato Pie, and she will be talking about marijuana, budget surplus, saving childcare accounts, and much more. So she is a very active state senator from the amount of engagements that I've seen her do since she's been in her office, so please feel free to attend that.
Thank you. Jay?
Piggyback on something Chad mentioned, last council meeting, the water main flushing is starting next week, for next two weeks, so remind your neighbors, you know, don't wash your clothes during the day. Second, I'll remind not just my district, but everyone now, if you live on a house and there's a storm drain, keep the leaves out to prevent your intersections from flooding. And a few things I did, I met a few more neighbors in Seminole Hills that were vandalized a few weeks ago, hauled bark and mulch over from the recycling site down to our community garden, and I talked to a few neighbors on Smithfield, reassured them that we will, we will have the street paved and smoothed shortly, and it is, it is pretty close. Smithfield was in very bad shape, and I think they're going to be very happy to not be smacking their struts and shocks on their cars so much. Thank you.
Thank you. So Brandy.
I too am going to be attending Saturday's facility event, field trip. The other comment that I want to make is I attended, as the mayor pointed out, I attended the recycle event, and thank you to all those that put that together and have attended in years past, and it's been a worthwhile, worthwhile of my time to spend with a number of city employees, and the event in itself is great. But the question I have for Alder Gerhart, and she just stepped away for a moment. All right. There was some concern from the other volunteers of the number, those that came into the shredding event, and I'm not sure about the electronics, but the numbers seem to be way down, and several of the volunteers are from RCC, thought maybe we should just shift to one event, maybe in the spring. I don't know, that's just a thought, but then again, maybe the numbers were down because there was a Badger game, so I'm sure they'll discuss it in RCC. But I'm curious as to those numbers, and hopefully they'll publish them.
I think you're right, because I saw that too, Brandy.
Yeah, yeah.
Usually this event is kind of like at the end of October.
Yeah.
And people know that it's coming like late in the fall, this event, and I don't think there were too many promotion or publicity about this event in advance, and that one could be one of the reasons too.
And that comment was made by a number of drive-ins as well, the residents, so there may be several issues, but I'm curious as to those numbers, and I'd hate to see one of the events go away. I mean, they've always been so well-attended and beneficial to the community, so hopefully we can correct any of the issues that may exist, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you. Shannon?
I have no report.
Okay. And Jay?
Well, I met with, I went to a neighborhood meeting this week and met with some residents, and I talked with another resident about a stormwater problem, and there's, what else did I do? I don't know, I keep doing things. But I did want to remind people that tomorrow, Madison Metro is having a public hearing on some adjustments they're making to the routes. Now, it looks like the only route in Fitchburg that they're proposing to adjust is 75, and that's just, that's the route that goes to Epic, and they're just basically proposing some minor changes to some of the times, but for those who like to keep abreast of what Metro is doing, tomorrow's hearing should be informative, so that's all I had.
Thank you. And also, I want to say that today, we have a meeting with Madison Metro, so we're having some regular meeting with Madison Metro, but we didn't talk about routes changes, you know?
No, they did not. We did not specifically talk about those. They mentioned that based upon campus, UW campus being back in session, that obviously has created a significant demand for services downtown, and that has necessitated some route adjustments as well, and that the 75 that does run out to Epic has also had quite a bit of usage as well.
Yes, so, oh, I forgot what I was saying. Okay. So any other comment? Nope? Okay, so tomorrow announcement, so tomorrow is the committee of the whole, Mueller Communication will be here to present Phase 1 and 2. will be here to present phase one and two, and then, what else? We have another topic, the wells, isn't it?
Wells, water and wells.
Water and wells, okay. And next, our next common council meeting will be October 10, and everyone is invited to the Finance Committee Budget Presentation, October 3rd and October 4th, so I will ask you to attend, so it's gonna make your life easy when you read a 700-page budget, okay? So, okay, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 9:15. Thank you very much. Buenas noches.